Councilman Andrew.
President.
Councilwoman Madalena.
President.
Councilman Leon.
President.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Divertori.
President. Go to the hearing, item number one.
An ordinance recently drawn a lot being fifty by one fifty in South One Third of Southwest, one fourth of Block Seven of the Iowa addition from RM two to RM three requested by Tracy Washington located at two eleven South Am Street, Iowa addition overlay recommendation to deny by zoning commission. Tracy's your race.
New council?
That was gonna be.
So we got new microphone. Uh, so this is a resulting request by Mr. Tracy Washington, the apartment on RM two currently she's asking to go to RM three. It's on the corner of Elm and South Hanson. It's also located in Iowa addition overlay and uh, the only change is that you may have received additional emails that's not included in your staff report packet. Have any questions? Sure, Mr. Tracy's here or not?
Anyone want to vote?
Yes.
Tell me the prime, give me the name and your address.
I'm a veteran, I'm on eight ten Hanson, on the corner of Am Street and uh, that's where I'll be rezoning. And uh, I've been there now for about five years and uh, I don't feel the need to be rezoning. Uh, it's a neighborhood is good and uh, it ain't the best. But since I've been there, I've had trouble before when I first got there. I mean, breaking in cars and all this stuff and maybe there's been a couple of real bad incidents in the neighborhood and I think if we bring more people into it, I don't know if, I don't know what if we zone for duplex or anything like that. To my home, I guess this. But after anything else, I, we, me and a couple of my neighbors, we talked about it and we don't feel the need to, to use any of them.
Thank you.
Dr. Louise Bosick and Mr. Wells, that would be my name rather than that old lady, if you don't mind. I live at one of Elm Drive in Hammond. Recently, uh, I was referred to uh, as someone who wants to flip houses. So I'm not even sure what flipping is, but I've never done it and have no intention of beginning at this point. Uh, it's doubtful that some could comprehend my efforts and the efforts of dozens of other property owners in the district south of Mark Street and between Cypress and Range Road established in two thousand and four as the Iowa Neighborhood Association. For two decades, we've unified our efforts and worked hard and consistently to purge the area of blight and to encourage owner occupancy of the homes there. The small lot on Hanson and Elm is currently a focus for our neighborhood. The lot for investors from outside our district who apparently entertain a flip mentality seem to have found the little corner property ripe for a quick profit for minimal investment. To us, it's a violation of the principles of preservation which we have adhered to for many years. Having a single family home on that property would be welcome. The lot is small and setbacks would require the house itself to be small. We have no objection to that and welcome new neighbors. But a multi-family project there is, as the zoning board has indicated by their unanimous recommendation to deny the project, is absurd. We ask that you support our zoning board, our neighborhood association, and the immediate neighbors on Elm Street and on Hanson by denying this request from Mrs. Wells and her husband, Councilman Wells from District Three.
I'm eight pounds, I live three hundred north of Holler, so you might wonder why I have any interest in this. My son and I own the house next door to the uh, officials for youth and my grandson owns the one near that. My grandson lives in his home, has always lived there. And um, I have now a current tenant, who's been there a while, who is a special needs young man. He considers it his home. I'd like to give it a homing order, please.
Karen Walston, I live at four oh four South Cherry in the Iowa District Neighborhood. Two hundred and eleven South Elm property is within the Iowa addition overlay district, which is part of the Unified Development Code of our city. It's under section eight point four. Now, the primary purposes or purpose of our overlay district is twofold. One, to secure, preserve, and improve the district's historic, single-family residential character. And two, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. Since the overlay district's adoption in two thousand and six, we have made great progress in doing both. Because of the overlay's restrictions, new construction and renovations have helped secure and improve the single-family residential character of our neighborhood. Some divided such standard rental properties have been restored back to original single-family homes. Working with the city, we have helped remove more than thirty hazardous structures. The Hammond East Side Action League or Feels has cleaned up and continues to maintain overgrown and trash-ridden developed and undeveloped properties that have been neglected by outside district property owners. This includes two hundred and eleven South Elm Street. Because of these and other improvements, property values have increased in our area and more families have moved into the neighborhood. It has been such a pleasure for me over the years to see more and more families out strolling and people walking their dog. Rezoning the two hundred and eleven South Elm Street property would allow for an up to three-story apartment building and therefore derail the progress we have made to secure our neighborhood's single-family character. Property values will diminish, not only for the single-family homes near the two hundred and eleven South Elm Street site, but for other properties throughout the district. Your approval of this rezoning would also set precedent for allowing other multi-family housing development to move forward in our neighborhood. For these reasons, I ask you to deny the request to rezone two hundred and eleven South Elm Street and help us continue to secure, preserve, and improve our neighborhood's historic, single-family residential character. Thank you for your consideration.
My name is Shawna Seals, I live at six ten South Ranger Road, Hammond. And I'm here just to ask the council to please deny the request to rezone two eleven South Elm from RM three to RM two. Approving such a request will potentially open the door for future requests of this type, which will eventually more severely alter the character of the neighborhood. I grew up in Grace Corners, which is part of the Iowa District. And years ago, that neighborhood had a distinct character that was defined and maintained by property owners who cared about living in an environment that was healthy, safe, and conducive to raising a family. My old neighborhood has lost a lot of its character and it's already riddled with blight, crime, and other issues that I believe is associated, directly associated with the number of property owners who do not live in that area and who do not care much more about anything than collecting rent. We want to take back our neighborhood and return it to its original character. We're asking you to help us do that and not further deteriorate one of Hammond's oldest historic neighborhoods. Please vote against this request. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Danley, I live at six oh eight South Orange Street. I bought my house two years ago. This was built in nineteen oh four and I enjoy living in that area. I've been resident here for a while, a wonderful life. And um, it's been great to see the light being removed and houses being restored. I don't think that this change or allowance and this ordinance is going to benefit our neighborhood. So if you could please, um, deny the request. Thank you.
You even counsel, mayor, everyone. Um, first of all, I would like to say my great-grandfather, William Zoll, and my father, John L. Washington, of the wisest men I know, told me, it's not what people call you is what you answer to. I'm Tracy Washington Wells. My address is six ten Mooney Avenue. Um, initially, when I went to this planning and zoning board, I went for a variance. And I indicated at that time that I planned on building a duplex at that address for myself and my adult children. Um, I can only speculate and not verify how it turned from a duplex to an apartment or a multi-family three-story apartment on that lot, which is fifty by one fifty. Um, the intent of requesting the rezoning from RM two to RM three was to allow for a smaller variance of the square footage that would be allowed to build a duplex. This is my own personal residence that I'm going to build. It will get built regardless. I mean, if I have to do a single family, that's fine, but I prefer a duplex. And the reason for that being is I have adult children who reside with me. I am moving from Mooney Avenue because of the issues in that district. And you all are fully aware of what they are. The gunshots down the mooney, uh, at the park, the sewer, which we receive calls almost twenty-four seven, that's running into people's bathrooms and bathtubs. And just this week, I thought I had purchased the ideal spot until they had a shooting and a killing over there two blocks from where I purchased the property. Yes, the land is in Tracy Washington. Devon Wells is my husband. I was transparent from the beginning. I went through the process. Did not ask for any special treatment. Do not ask for any special treatment from you. Listen to your constituents. It's nothing personal. But the intent of it all is to build a duplex for myself and my adult children. So however it turned into all these other avenues and other options, I have no idea. But I was clear from the very beginning. Thank you.
Anyone else? You two?
No, sir.
Item number two on the public hearing.
An ordinance recently drawn a lot being zero point one six two acres from RS three. So RM three in accordance with a survey by WMJ Roden June, dated five twenty-six twenty-twenty requested by Adrian Wells, located at nine zero five South Mooney Avenue. Recommendation to approve by zoning commission. Tracy's your race.
This apartment's currently in RS three. Is asked to rezone to RM three and is located on the um, corner canal off of uh, Mooney Avenue. It's in a blood zone. Um, I know that Mr. Adrian has spoken to private, which actually maintains that um, that waterway and has spoken about setbacks and how he could build on that lot and um, they're inclined to doing what has to be done with private rates and regulations. Um, so he's asking to rezone from RS three to RM three. Sure he's here?
No, I'm here for him.
Okay, Tracy's gonna speak on this bit after.
No, Adrian Wells is not here, but if you have any questions pertaining to this project, I can answer those questions as well. Are there any questions?
Anyone else on the public? You two?
Yes, sir.
Kansas City Council Regulation Agenda, vote out with it.
Councilman Andrew.
President.
Councilwoman Madalena. President. Councilman Leon.
President.
Councilman Divertori.
President. The domed tier. Let us stand by our. A real shower. Come up and lead us in prayer, please.
My father, on this night, you brought us together one more time and we recognize your sovereignty. We recognize that all power is in your hand and that you can do all things but fail. We pray for the proceedings and everything, oh God, will work out to your honor, to your glory. Uh, we pray your blessings on this city, on the mayor, his team, God, and serve of this council. Bless them all that they all can be bound together in a band of love that one can't fall for the other. Hold them all up. And bless us, God, as citizens of this parish and of this state to be the best we can while we can. And we'll be careful to give you glory and honor for it all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to call Byron Lewis, the leaders in the city tonight, Westside of Minnesota, his grace, all written and in the military peace, surrender your prophecy.
The regions of the United States of America, and to the brotherhood which sustains, one nation under God, in every world, for the very people of this world.
I'd like to thank you, Lewis, for being here tonight and uh, playing and Pastor Shabbat Stephanie and our prayer. We'll move next to our reports.
It will be brought out, Mr. Eric C. P. A. to share the praise.
Hi, everybody. I'm the president, I'm the council, mayor, city administration. Uh, I am Michelle Fisher with Christian McGrays and I am here excited, we do, to present the audit report for the city of Hammond from year end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. As you know, the city is required to submit the audit report to the legislative board for the fourth amendment first, um, before it becomes a public document. It has to be reviewed and approved and issued by them. Um, we did make that deadline, however, due to um, uh, circumstances of the Louisiana Department Office, they were, they were delayed in reviewing and approving and issuing the report until the February fifteenth. It is now available on their website. So it is now considered a public document. Um, if I may, I would like to give you a brief summary of what is included in the audit statements. On pages one, two, and three of the financial statements, it is basically our audit opinion, which you guys received an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which means um, that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and that's the best opinion that you guys could receive. Um, I would recommend that on pages four through fourteen is the management's discussion and analysis, or otherwise called the M D N A, which city administration and some input from others, you know, they put this together. Uh, I would encourage everyone who is interested in reviewing the financial statements to start by reading the M D N A, as this provides a summary of the current year activity and compares the current year to prior year. Okay, and it gives explanations of variances and indifferences. Um, also within the M D N A, there's a comparison of the government-wide financial statements. You guys have two sets of statements, government-wide and governmental. Government-wide is an all-inclusive, it's on a full-acronym basis, it includes all of your capital assets, it includes all of your debts, it includes liabilities related to your pension, related to your other post-employee benefits, um, kind of like a, a city, like a, um, a business type operation, okay? Um, I would like to say that for the year end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, total revenues exceeded your expenses by approximately two point four million, resulting in an increase in total net position, um, from forty-eight point four to fifty point eight. So that was very good. Um, also included in the M D N A, there is a, a comparison of revenues between twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. The city's largest source of revenue is sales tax, and this had a very small increase of about fifty-eight thousand or about a quarter of a percent. Um, your main increase is you had an increase of about five hundred thousand, total overall increase for the revenues. And that was, that comprised mainly of your grants, capital grants and operational grants. But mainly the capital related to the, um, I want to say the canal improvements. You also received money from the state, um, for uh, the airport for purchasing the property, so on. Um, and then you also had an increase in your adult borrowing taxes. Okay, it was about a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, your main fund is your general fund, your operating fund. The fund balance of the general fund increased about four hundred and fifty thousand, leaving an end fund balance in the general fund, um, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty of about two point nine million, which is great. This represents about approximately eleven and a half percent of general fund expenditures or a little over one month of general fund. The G F O A, or Government Finance Officers Association recommends that a general purpose government maintain an unrestricted fund balance of no less than two months of regular general fund expenditures, which in your case for twenty twenty was about four, four point three million. So y'all are fairly, you know, y'all are slowly building up to that over the years, you've taken great steps in, in building it, which is great. Um, you know, unfortunately, we live in an area that is very vulnerable to natural disasters. Um, we were very lucky, west of this was not and east too. But if something happens as far as a natural disaster, the general fund is going to be responsible for coming out of pocket to help subsidize cities' services before any federal state aid. So it's recommended that you, you know, keep trying to build up that, um, general fund balance so that you can cover at least two. That's what the G F O A does.
Would that not be the emergency fund, would that, we could include that as well?
You have emergency funds here. You have about one point two million in the emergency fund. So if you took that one point two and you added it to this two point nine, it gives you that four point two, four point three, but that leaves you nothing in the general fund. So you still want to have a little bit in there, but yes, you do have that one point two in the, um, emergency fund to help. But, you know, we never know what happened. We look at, well, they call them, not yet. So, um, in addition to our opinion on the financial statements, we also issue a report on compliance with uniform guidance. And this is over your major grant programs. Um, I'm happy to say that you all complied in all material respects. There were no findings and you received a clean opinion on that. And that was over your grants. Um, also, we issue a report in accordance with governmental auditing standards, standards, um, which is internal controls of financial reporting and compliance. And you guys, um, had no findings as far as that concern. That was very good. I would like to mention, uh, the sales tax fund. Uh, we did have a, an increase uh, in the fund balance to nine, nine hundred and eighty thousand. It was about a fifty-two thousand dollar increase. I mean, we did have a slight increase in collections and a little bit less in the transfers account. Um, lastly, your financial statements contain two discreetly presented components, which are the city court and the marshal office. And I just want to let you know that there were no findings, are audited by other auditors. And I want to let you know that there were no findings, no issues with them, and they had clean reports as well. Okay. Um, in summary, the city, you know, under the administration and the council obtained a clean opinion on the financial statements, is doing well financially. And y'all had no findings related to governmental audit standards or uniform guidance. Um, I would like to thank, you know, Mayor Lacy's staff in the city of Hammond, you know, for their cooperation and assistance in, um, in getting it done, getting the audit done. With COVID, it's been very tough on a lot of entities. Um, the legislative board are one of the reasons they were delayed is because of all of the extensions. We did not have to do that. Um, so that's wonderful and I would like to thank the council very much, um, you know, for the opportunity for performing the audit. And, if there are any questions?
Uh, question. In, in the audit, I didn't see, is there, you report within the departments? Do you report, uh, transfers, like from money, within the department transfers?
The transfers between departments?
Yeah.
Not between departments, no. It's on a, the financial statement level. You will see other financing sources or uses, um, that is going to be under governmental funds, but it, it doesn't specifically say, let's see, you have a lot of reports here.
Is there, is there an amount to, is there a maximum amount that, that can be, uh, that doesn't, was the maximum amount of transfer, dollar amount, uh, that wouldn't have to come to council approval? Is, is that?
Okay, that, that is not specifically in here. We look at total transfer on, like, on the top level, not like by department individually. That would be like during, that would be tested kind of, I guess, during the budget testing or something like that. The way that the budget is tested is you have the total of this at five percent of variances in total financial expenditures. But the transfers aren't not done like individually like that, or something like that. There's a materiality level still following.
So yeah, is that a way that would come in your school?
It would be in here, yes. If anybody has questions after this, please, please give me a follow-up or email me. I know, you know, I've communicated with Tanya and Steph and Co. to try to help with certain things. Just let me know.
I will suggest, this is here, ma'am, how you doing?
Hi.
Uh, next time you come up, if you come up, did you kind of have a slide where, where the people in the audience know what you're talking about, what's going on?
Okay, a presentation, like little PowerPoints?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have the, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the public? Question? You two?
No, sir.
Move on to the fourth. Mayor?
Uh, next Tuesday, uh, we'll be having a charter committee review here in the, uh, chambers. It'll be March second, five thirty. Okay. So, uh, anyone from the public wanting to come and, uh, possibly see what's going on with the charter review, that's the city Hammond charter, uh, please come.
I'd like to begin, you know, first, uh, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Uh, start out by saying, uh, by asking a question. Can I get an update on the sewer issue that we are having in District Three for the city, please? Could you talk in the mic where we can hear you, please?
Basically, everything that has been brought to our attention, we've addressed. And as I was talking to a guy, when it comes to next year's capital overlay, we are having some issues that need to be addressed as far as camery, these, these lines that are having consistent, um, problems with backing up. You know, let's put some funds toward that next fiscal year, which is July one, and get this thing, you know, corrected. But everything that has happened as a, that up to this point has been addressed.
Okay, well, y'all have these meetings. I would like to be a part of them, since we, since in District Three, we're always having all the issue with the sewer.
Absolutely. This is the time when we're planning for the capital overlay for next fiscal year. So we encourage us getting together with each council member in that district and planning this.
Okay. Another question I have. How the city started collecting the three hundred and fifty, uh, dollars from the railcar fees?
It goes into effect this month, so the first collection would be next month. That was effective this month, so you can't collect it in advance. You collect it after, you have the number of cars to help after.
Okay, because when I got on here, we was supposed to start February 1st, so.
It goes into effect February 1st, but you have to count the number of cars that are passing through in February, and then you would bill them in March for the number of cars that went through in February. You can't bill in advance because they don't necessarily know how many cars are going to be moving to Moonie Street.
Thank you. And let me get an update on the building official position. Are we looking with that?
As of, let's see, this is Friday, we have 10 applicants for the building official position.
All right, thank you. I will say this here. Thanks to my God that I'm learning how to bite my tongue, and it hurts. Because normally, when anybody say something about me, it don't matter where we're at. We're going to discuss it, and we're going to talk about it, and we're going to do whatever it takes to resolve that issue. So I just want to tell everybody, thanks to my God, and I will continue to pray, because we do. Whether people want to see it or not, we truly have issues going on in this area. And we need help, not just from one or two, we need help from everybody. This month, we are celebrating Black History Month. And whatever I learned and what I've been reading, that no black have been able to do nothing by themselves. It takes other people, other race, in order for us to solve these issues. If not, we see what's going on in our area. Just in case you all don't know, every two weeks, a black young male is getting killed in Hammond. I've been begging, I've been asking for the police to patrol our area, come sit in the park. Right before I came up here today, 40 kids in Moonie Park. I hope don't let it happen by the time I get out of this meeting. We definitely need help, and we're not receiving no help. And I'm asking, I'm begging. The city not going to get better if y'all don't try to work together. Roll the showers, pass the showers. I urge your prayer. I hope everybody from the city pays attention to your prayer. And if they didn't hear your prayer, if they didn't get a word out your prayer, that's a good thing why you talk. Anything you say up here, I don't promise it. I tell them all the time, 10 years from now, you can always go back and hear what was said and who said what. Thank you, Mr. President. And now, I got to talk about the President now. What's the update? I'm speaking. What's the update on the booking room incident?
Let me contact the lawyer on this morning. It's all said in the term of call or email. But the last update that I received from him, they had conducted a, uh, I'm going to blank. I'm going to get around the position that position is. But the guy and hisself was finishing up a case that he was working on. Over the end of December into January, so he should be good wrapping that up. He could go ahead and pick up his part. And hoping that they should have everything done and wrapped up within the next two weeks.
Okay, because there's a question that come at me all the time. People ask me what's going on with the booking room incident. So that's why, uh, and you know how I am. I don't like, uh, behind closed doors meetings. So pretty much whatever I do, I always do it where the public can hear what's going on and what's said. So to the President, Council President Kilk, and to the mayor, and to Lacy's administration, I just want to tell you, thank you. And once again, District 3 need help. Thank you.
Any other councilor? Next item on the.
You made this a February 9th, 2021. Make a motion to approve. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wills?
Aye.
Councilman Victoria?
Revolutions. Old business, none, new business. First item on the resolution.
A resolution to appoint Regina Delon to the Hammond Historic District Commission to serve the remainder of a four-year term until December 31st, 2023. Mayor, who can add a proposal?
Regina and Todd have purchased Red Light Brew many years ago. Since that purchase and run that business, they purchased an additional building two doors down, completely renovated, put their home up on top, put another business down for one, a wine tasting, some oil there. And since then, the last year and a half, they've purchased an additional building behind that, which they've renovated in this office space. So they live downtown, they've been downtown, their business downtown, and Reynolds downtown, Ellen and I are still downtown. She would be a good candidate, you know, that's the ability that she has.
Who's turn? Susan's for one, again? Susan Seals? Lucy, was that you? Susan Seals?
Is she here? Would you like to say something?
Hi, I'm Regina Delon, I live at 206 East Thomas Street. My husband and I own Red Light Brew, we own Botique Day Company. We love Hammond, we're from the West Bank. We've been here about almost nine years. We have a lot invested in Hammond because we care about the city. We care about downtown, people love coming downtown to visit. And we want to keep it that way. We want to make sure people feel like they want to come travel. We get people from the West Bank that come over to see downtown, because so we need. So anyway, I hope that you'll, you'll point me to the commission. I'll take it very seriously. I grew up around construction, my dad was a contractor of my whole life, so I know all about architecture. And I'm in medical devices, I sell products for cancer treatment. So I'm pretty well-rounded, I can talk my head out normally. And we own a bar, so I'm really good at that too. We're just talking about that, I pray and I drink wine, that's what I did. Anyway, I hope you'll consider me, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to vote? You two?
No, sir.
Another councilor?
Motion.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Victoria?
Aye.
Councilman Wills?
No.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda, final adoption of orders.
Final adoption of orders, here is on a lot being 50 by 150 and South 1/3 of Southwest 1/4 of Block 7 of Iowa Edition from RM 2 to RM 3, requested by Tracy Washington, located at 211 South M Street. Iowa Edition overlay recommendations are denied by the zoning commission.
Before we vote on that, I just wanted to make a clarification because we have two rezones. One's, both of them are RM 2 to RM 3. So I just wanted to clear out with the record, Tracy, Tralacy, can you? Will you just tell us about the overlay, does the overlay district, Iowa overlay district, allow duplexes?
First of all, they're both not the same request. The separate request is from RS 3.
Oh, okay.
To RM 3, okay. So they're a little different. The overlay district is similar to, let's say, subdivision regulations. So it's extra regulations on top of zoning. And you have the Iowa district regulations in your packet, and it's, they, no, only single family. Typically, RM 2 is a duplex zoning, and RM 3. And to reiterate what Ms. Tracy said, that RM 3 only allows for multi-story, multi-family if the land is large enough to meet that. So this lot wouldn't have met that.
So the question was, does it allow for a duplex?
The overlay district.
The overlay district. And in the reading, and correction if I'm wrong, Ms. Tralacy, is it would have to have a variance from the Board of Adjustments? I mean, I would have to apply for a variance? Is that not correct?
Yeah, that is correct. You'd have to go for a variance for the overlay district and for the lot size requirement.
So I wanted to make that clear based on the question you asked. And then in reading the staff report, it says that the property size is 50 by 150, which is 7,500 square feet. Under RM 3, it would only need to be 5,000 square feet for a single family and 8,000 feet for a attached house. And so the reason, again, the request for the rezone was it reduced the variance size that I would need. I'm not sure if any of you have been over there to visit the property, but a petition, and you do have it, where I indicated to those persons my intent for that lot, and those signatures were for a duplex. I specifically told them what my intent is as well. And before I sit down, I just want to make one recommendation to, this is a sidebar, to the council and to the administration. The planning and zoning commission meetings should be recorded so we can always, citizens can always go back and watch. Those meetings aren't recorded, and it's a public body. So that's just a suggestion.
They, they are recorded, but the public hearing number privately recorded, but not audio, video.
Right, privately recorded in minutes, or what do you mean?
There is actually recording, a digital recording.
Has that always been? Okay, so there's no, I would have to do a public request in order to have that versus just pulling it up on YouTube?
Right, yeah.
Right, so a recommendation is, so please allow those meetings to be on YouTube when they happen.
Pleasure of the council?
Yeah, I have something to say. This is what I need. I walked the neighborhood, 22 signatures, I think I received. And I got it on the page. And that's why I say this. This was the public needed to be able to see. The council may receive what we have up here, but the public needs to see. I got 22 signatures. Didn't ask for the rent, or homeowner, or none of that. And I just want to walk the area for myself, just to see what was going on and how it looked. And Ms. Seals, I heard her say, uh, she right. When I was younger, or little, the area looked much better over there. A lot of homeowners, a lot of people I knew are going to church at Massa Don. And I was very disappointed, you know, in how the area looked. And again, you know, it's in Kilk District, well, President Kilk, it's in his district. You got to give him that chance, Kilk, sorry, that President Kilk. It's in his district, and I didn't even go in the area without talking to him. And I asked him, will it be okay if I go over there and get signatures? One thing about me, I'm not going to go over to nobody's head and do nothing out of heart. I didn't talk about it, didn't discuss it, didn't ask nobody to do this for me, do that for me. Went through all the steps and doing it himself the right way. And from this point on, Andre, even councilman, told me he, somehow he always catch me at the right time. I guess he tried to keep me in my place. And told me he would advise me, you know, not to vote on. And I told him, I'm talking to my God. I don't know what I would do, but let me talk to my God. And I say this all the time to let people know, I'm going to go by the book. And however the council vote on it, it's okay. Because we just need to do everything the right way, no matter who it is, whether you're rich or poor. Let's just do things the right way, moving forward from this day on. And that's all I wanted to do, just go do it the right way. Tracy, when Tracy came to you, she had her name on there, Tracy Washington. She did everything the right way. And she got to keep me in line, because I get out of line in a minute. And I, y'all know, if you don't know, I get up and I clown when it's time. Especially when it come to people that's trying to do what's right. And I just wanted to let, I just wanted to let the councilmen know and let the audience know exactly what's going on. Yeah, we want to build a duplex, you know, because what's going on in Moonie area? You know, from the shooting, to the crime, to everything take place in Moonie. Every night now, it's like it's a habit. I'm hearing gunshots, like it's the Fourth of July, and like it's Christmas. That's the only time it's probably a firework. And I don't even think it's all the pop fireworks in the city of Hammond, you want to know the truth? But I'm hearing gunshots all the time. No, Tracy not used to this. I'm not used to it. When I ride down the road and stuff, you know what the people tell me? "Von, boy, I thought the police got you." Man, don't say nothing like that, boy, you crazy. This is what they tell me. Every time we hear gunshots and I talk to somebody, they be glad to see me. They don't know how glad I be, just to still be alive. So thank you, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to deny.
Seven.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Victoria?
Aye.
Councilman Wills?
I'm sorry.
Second item on the agenda for final adoption.
Final adoption of an order to rezoning that being 0.162 acres from RS 3 to RM 3 in a form with a survey by WMG Golden Gemini, dated 5/26/2020, requested by Adrian Wills, located at 905 South Moonie Avenue. Recommendation to approve by the zoning commission.
Pleasure of the council?
Yes. I guess I can talk about this, this is my district. And what I can say about Adrian, he's doing a good job in the area. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. And we doing the best we could in our area, and another improvement will take place. And one thing we do do for the record, we don't just let anybody rent our place out. I have rental property, so we watch who they rent the place. And we make it clear that what we looking for when somebody move in that area on our place now, and we got a lot of rental property in our area. And guess what, that same crap you talking about and speak about, we have those same issue when people have hours over there and rent them to end everybody. That's it, uh, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seven.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wills?
Councilman Viterio?
Aye.
And Councilman Lee, uh, motion approved.
Introduce your honor and say, for the hearing, none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. I hope we move right into our program of Reverend Daniel Phil, Award of Excellence ceremony.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Well, Father gracious, Father, we just thank you right now. Father, uh, we give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, we give you thanks on tonight. Father God, just thanking you that you woke us up this morning and closed in our right mind, activity and use of our life. Father God, to death, ever a time we need you, we need you right now. Father God, continue to look down upon us with your blessings right now through what all right now with this COVID nineteen. But all the things that are going on around us, this week from that last ice storm, so many people have lost their lives, so many people have lost faith. But we know through it all, our hope is telling you, we know that we got it, because you are our Father, we're gonna make sure that we have it. We just thank you right now that everything is done decently, and please be at your side. For you, we get all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, because you belong to you. We thank you for tonight, for this ceremony on tonight, Father God. We thank you for Mr. Daniel Phil, the life that he lived. We give you, give you glory and honor and praise for him right now. Just thanking you right now, for it all, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we're gonna have our, uh, beautiful marriage.
I just like to welcome everyone to the conference tonight. Uh, just to welcome tonight, Ms. Early, Dan Drifield, would you come up, please? I'd like to say that I didn't have the pleasure of knowing a brides and bridegroom, but I had the pleasure to know you. Loving you death and life. So, I'd like to have you on, especially, I know you like to play two birds, so, who was yours?
Good evening, everyone. And I would like to say to the man, the councilman, and everyone that makes up this great city of Hammond, it's a pleasure tonight for me to let y'all know how much it means. So, you all could thank every one of my husband, for every year you guys show love for Hammond. And, uh, tonight, I was honoring someone that I think is very, very huge, the accolades that we are going to get tonight. And, uh, y'all know that I thank everybody for everything that they do for my family and I, and we appreciate it. And I'm asking you guys to continue to keep us in your prayer. Okay? Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna have Dr. Norman, the King of Germany, and I have a dream, Lord, Norman Martin, then Father, can you tell me anything?
I say to you today, my friends, so even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is deeply rooted, deep, it is a dream, deep, deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day, this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day, on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of, of former slaves and sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that one day, even the state of Mississippi, a state squandering with heat of injustice, twittering with heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that one, that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today, I have a dream that one day, down in Alabama, with this vicious racism, with this government having this drift, his lips dripping with the word into position and lunacy cage. One day, right there in Alabama, little black boys and little black girls will be able to join hands with little white boys and little white girls as sisters and brothers. I have a dream today, I have a dream that one day, every valley shall be exalted, every hill and mountain shall be made low, the rough places will be made plain, and the crooked places will be made straight, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all the flesh shall be seen together. This is our hope, this is our faith that I will go back to the South with. With this faith, we'd be able to heal out of the mountain of despair and stone of hope. With this faith, we'd be able to heal out, transform the jangly discord of our nation to a beautiful symphony of brotherhood. With this faith, we'd be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom, knowing that we'll be free one day. This will be the day when all God's children will be able to sing with a new meaning. My country free, tears of thee, sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. Land where my farmers die, land of the pilgrims cry, from every mountain sigh, let freedom ring. And when this happens, we will allow freedom to ring. And when, and when, when we let it ring from every village and every home lane, from every state and every city, we will be able to speed up that day when all God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will be able to join hands and sing in the words of the old Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last." Thank God Almighty, we're free at last.
At this time, we have the occasion, Markeitha Jackson will come over and read it.
Good evening. Good evening. We will El Dan Drifield Award of Excellence. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Cardi G Woodson, a preeminent historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of Negroes throughout the history of the United States. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, the celebration of Negro History Week was expanded to include the entire month of February and became known as Black History Month, a federally recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant roles that African-Americans have played in the shaping of the United States' history. Whereas many African-Americans have contributed to development of the City of Hammond, and their accomplishments impact our lives through their works of education, healthcare, business, and government. Whereas the Hammond City Council endeavors to enhance the council's relationship with the Tangierho Pa- Tangierho African-American Heritage Museum, the Second Saturday Breakfast Organization, and the Martin Luther King Park Association. Whereas the City of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within the Hammond community, including Tangierho Parish, who have positively impacted the lives of African-Americans. Whereas the City of Hammond desires to recognize local, including Tangierho Parish, African-Americans, past and present, who have made significant accomplishments that have positively impacted the City of Hammond. Now being resolved that the City of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, the City of Hammond, the City of Hammond, we will El Dan Drifield Award of Excellence to a deserving citizen or citizens who have made significant accomplishments that positively reflects on the City of Hammond, or who represents through their actions and committed their willingness to go the extra mile and make a positive impact in our communities and the City of Hammond. The Hammond City Council will appoint a committee of five members with the purpose of selecting the recipients for recognition by the second meeting in January of each year. The committee shall be made up of nominees from the Tangierho African-American Museum, a nominee from the Tangierho Parish Library, a nominee from the Martin Luther King Park Association, and two at large members appointed by the council president. The term of the appointment shall be for two years. This resolution is approved and adopted this seventh day of February, two thousand twelve.
Now, we have a selection by Titus Shaw.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I would be relieved if I cannot give the honor, reverence, and praises to the Holy Trinity. All clergy members present, the Honorable Mayor, Council President, other council members, our honored guest, Mrs. Dan Drifield, and to all of you who have come out to witness this awe-inspiring occasion. Inasmuch as my grandmother, the late Oritah Vining, taught me what the Bible says in the Thirteen Chapter of Romans, that we should give honor to whom honor is due, once again, I am grateful to Councilman Andrews for this opportunity. During the many years I labored alongside Mr. Dan Drifield, I learned a valuable lesson of being community-minded, as well as the call God placed on all our lives to help others whenever possible. The nominee I will speak about was the epitome of what I have aforementioned, the late, great Reverend Elmo Master Booker Senior. Before I recite the bio, I have prepared, I want to say I've been honored to stand and talk about my first pastor. Because of his faith in God, his compassion for people, and tenacity, Reverend E. M. Booker Senior reshaped the foundation of this community, this city, and the entire Tangierho Parish. Furthermore, the Holy Spirit reminded me of the many blessings he bestowed upon me as a child. The only thing I really remember about Reverend Booker is climbing the steps in the pulpit, giving him that little white envelope with the two dollars in. And when I did, he would put his hand on my head and say, "Bless you, child." And I really believe I have been truly blessed. Reverend Elmo Master Booker met and married Mary Beacom, wife of fifty-one years in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. In later years, Reverend and Mrs. Booker moved to Hammond, Louisiana, and resided first in the area that is known as Graveswaters. Also, for two or three years, he was a pastor of the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church. The nineteen twenty U.S. Census listed Elmo Booker as head of his family with wife Mary, one son Charlie, and two daughters, Ella and Irene. With an increase of family, Reverend Booker sought to become a land ar- landowner with monies earned and saved during his time in the armed services and through a financial arrangement with Judge Reeves. When the final payment was made, he moved his family to their new home. His father and two brothers purchased land also connected to his. The site was given the name Booker Settlement. As his children and others who lived around the Booker Settlement community grew to be school age, he decided that some sacrifices had to be made. As a result, the parents and members of Little Saint James Methodist Church opened their doors to be used as a school. Later on, the classes were moved to the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church site of which Reverend Booker was pastor of. The school remained there until a school could be built. Through the will and determination of Reverend Booker, the parents and their Italian neighbors, a small school known as Booker School was built. However, the school's education level ended at the seventh grade. When the children finished the seventh grade at Booker School, it was quite a long distance for them to travel to the nearest school to complete their education. Subsequently, Reverend Booker sought ways to make it possible for his children, as well as others, in and around the Booker Settlement community, to get to the next school. Disappointingly, the school board of Tangierho Parish was not in agreement with him providing transportation for black children to go to school. However, with God's help and my faith, Reverend Booker purchased a nineteen forty-one international passenger bus in nineteen forty-five and transported the children to school until the end of segregation. Because of his persistence and tenacity, Reverend Booker was offered a job as bus driver, which accredited him of being the first which accredited him of being the first black school bus driver of Tangierbo Parish school system. Moreover, Reverend Booker owned and operated the first grocery store in the rural section, which in later years was managed by one of his children. The Voting Rights Act was not passed until nineteen sixty-five. Therefore, it was almost impossible for blacks to vote in any election that, of course, would affect their lives significantly. Therefore, in nineteen fifty-one, Reverend Booker seized the opportunity to unite with other community leaders to transform that. Under the leadership, excuse me, therefore, under the leadership of Post Commander L.B.K. Holden, a political organization was formed called the People's Defense League of Tangierbo Parish, and Reverend Booker was elected as vice president of the organization. Thus, the fight to vote was continued by this league. Sadly, in those days, blacks had to pass a very rigorous test in order to register to vote. For those reasons, the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church, of which he was pastor of, was the first place to hold meetings designed to teach blacks how to register to vote. After those persons had been taught on what to do, Reverend Booker transported them to a meet to become registered voters. Thankfully, after two years of hard work, in nineteen fifty-three, a suit was filed, and it was a victory for the People's Defense League. Finally, in the seventies, Booker Settlement was so well-known, an interstate sign bearing the name of Booker Road One was placed on it. Regrettably, a state officials decided to remove this sign and replace it with Airport Road. Nevertheless, the name Booker Settlement remains in the history books of Tangierbo Parish, on maps, in census data, and in the memory of those who once lived there and who knew the Booker family. Reverend Booker was a visionary leader and civil rights activist. Let us remember our heritage and family history lest we forget Booker Settlement. The award was supposed to be accepted by Reverend Booker's grandson, Reverend Matt McCraney, but Reverend Ronald Valentine is here, is a grandson also. So, we'll ask that he come up and accept the award. Hammond City Council, City of Hammond, Hammond City Council, Wilbert L. Dandrea Field Award of Excellence, presented to Reverend E.M. Booker Senior for your individual achievements and your commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community through your selfless willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life, specifically in the African-American community. An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity, Martin Luther King Jr. This day, presented this day on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Nine five, next recipient, Markita Jackson will come up with the bar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank God for me being allowed to be able to be here today.
Amen.
To the mayor, to the other council members, and to all of you gathered, especially to Ms. Dandrea Field. Um, um, I'll be fifty years old in December, and I'm kind of like reflecting a lot more than I usually do. And I'm saying that because I used, I grew up right around the street, across the street from this Maxine Dixon, and around the corner from, uh, Kip Use's grandfather and grandmother. This award means so much to me because Mr. Wilbert Dandrea Field would be in the barber shop, when I was in the barber shop with my dad and my brother. And he would always encourage me, ask me about how school is going, make sure you're hanging, and he would always have a kind word to say. So, I think about the quote that Dr. Martin Luther King says, that everybody can be great because anybody can serve. Every time you saw Mr. Dandrea Field in the neighborhood, he was serving. He was a man on the move. He was always about the business in the neighborhood, making sure children were in school, making, we were doing what we were supposed to do. And I miss that, and I know because of him, I'm able to stand here today. Um, the person I'd like to recognize is also a great mentor of mine, Ms. Berning Wild Warren, is a phenomenal educator, I mean. I, I can think about, as me being a supervisor in the central office, I know because of her and Mr. Dandrea Field, I wouldn't be able to serve in that position now if it weren't for those two great individuals. Ms. Warren is a retired educator in principle. She's worked in the City of Mother Teresa School System, Houston Independent School District, San Diego Unified School District, University City, Missouri School District, and the Tangierbo Parish School System. She earned the Bachelor of Arts degree in Education from Grambling State University, and a Master of Education degree, plus thirty hours from Southeastern Louisiana University. Ms. Warren is a member, dutiful member of the Greenfield Missionary Baptist Church, where she has served as a member of the Pastors Aid Club Scholarship Committee, the Nicaness Board as the secretary, Mass Choir Number Two, Senior Mission, Mothers' Union, the president, Bible school teacher, prayer man, and custodian of the church bulletin board. She is a member of the Tangierbo Parish Advocate American Heritage Museum Board of Trustees, where she volunteered as a curator, museum tour guide, and participated in museum-sponsored educational programs and events. Ms. Warren is a golden and life member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Serority Incorporated, where she has served as the first chartering graduate advisor of the Lambda Omega Quadrant undergraduate chapter at Southeastern Louisiana University. She's a charter member and current member of the Tau Aola Omega Graduate Chapter, where she served as vice president, oddly least reported, founding day chair, and membership chair. Ms. Warren is the proud mother of four children, and she has five grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. Most importantly, her favorite scripture is the Twenty-Third Song. Tonight, I want to present the award to her granddaughter, Kirsten Pellshane, who's another phenomenal educator. So, Tangierbo Parish Council, Wilbert L. Dandrea Field Award of Excellence, presented to Ms. Berning Wild Warren for your individual achievements and your commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community through your selfless willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life, specifically in the African-American community. An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity, Martin Luther King Jr., February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Let me add this as well, is Ms. Warren is an active member in her community, and she lives in Councilman Wells District, which is District Three. And also, she's an active member of the Martha Adams Lunatic Chapter around the State University.
Now for our next recipient, the bio to be read by Mr. Kevin Thomas.
To all the council members, the mayor, our constituents, for privilege for me to just be here tonight and you're missed. Um, uh, before I do my presentation, I would like to encourage, two things I want to encourage the council members on, because I really heard Council Williams, his words really inspired me, and I'm going to do this for you. Nine eight five, six three four, nine four zero six. I'm rooting, it's nine eight five, six three four, nine four zero six. I can't tell you more than I have to. I don't know what's going on in your districts, I'm constituent of all of them, you know, that was raised here in Hammond. I can't say no. You ask for help, you may be asked for, so you know, that's my personal self. I said again, I can't say no if you don't call. And in saying that, that was something that was instilled by me, by my husband a long time ago. Because I remember the first time I met him was when Coach Belance had a football meeting with us, and he asked for our husband to speak, and the first thing he told us was, "It doesn't matter how fast you are, it doesn't matter how much weight you lift, it's how many people you help." And he taught me that when I was ten years old. So, I imparted on you guys. The second thing I would encourage you guys before my presentation is, about seven blocks north, that's some good things going on in the community. Now, you hear a lot of bats, right? Issues that are going on. I know they're on the mission, but there's some good things that are going on, okay? And I want to tell you, this young lady right here, and that young woman right there, Perry, Ms. Jackson, are one of the reasons those good things are going on. I'm going to tell you where they're at in a second, but there are a lot of your little constituents that are earning their care every day. And I would encourage you to take a trip over Forty-Eleven Christian Street, and hit the alternative Catholic schools, have time to spend with Mr. Perry, and as well as go to Aimee to visit with Mr. Markita Jackson. Because what you will notice tonight, you leave here, every candidate started in the education system. Those people that they deal with every day, that's your future. Like God said, you need help in your districts, they need you help in their schools.
That's right.
I promise you that. But that's some special things going on. That young man over there, put him on the front, on blast, and the kids tell me, they're doing some special things. And this lady right here, I tease her all the time, she'll walk into school with hair, toe, and booty, and she's got on some tennis shoes because she's going lot of walking, trying to make sure things are getting better. So, I say that to you guys, and I encourage your mayor to go visit, but there's special things going on every time.
I've been there last week, it was great.
Yeah, I'm saying that. Um, like I said, I, I really appreciate what you all did, and I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for some of the words he gave me on, and back, I'm not going to tell you all that. A long time ago. And I, those words stuck with me, when he told me, "It doesn't matter how fast you are, how much weight you lift, it's how many people you helping today." And that's really stuck with me, and I, and I, and him to tell me that, I know he did by that heart, I know he did. Um, the individual that I came to tonight, and it's funny, the same place that we were just talking about, I met this individual in school. And he walked up to me and said, "You're going to do this." I said, "I ain't doing nothing." No, you're going, this is what's best for you, you're going to do this. I'm not doing, I want to do, I want to. You're going to do this, and called my mom and said, "Hey, look, this Thomas, this is Coach Donald Dykes, your son is going to do this, he's going to do this, this is the best for him." And I didn't want, I didn't want, I didn't want no part of it. But I want to tell you this, for me to stay here tonight and tell you about the graduation from Hammond High School, him going to Southeastern and still having records in track and field to this day, I'm not going to tell you how many years later to be mad at me, it's not important numbers. But the numbers I do want to lay on you tonight, lay on your heart, for the last twenty years, in the last twenty years, he's done nothing else but put dedication, blood, sweat, and tears into the John Williams Foundation and Scholarship Fund. He said, "The Donald Dykes Scholarship Fund." I said, "The John Williams Scholarship Fund," because, just like me and Ms. Markita, and like your husband did, John Williams influenced him in high school when he was young, and imparted words on him, and made him go out and establish this fundraiser and this foundation in his name. And for the last twenty years, all he's done in your community, in your town, and in your parish, all he's done is affected over a hundred kids, and given over a hundred kids an opportunity to go to college financially. I can come up, you move the door, I can go to the front door, but there's not many people who are going to your, going to your wallet and say, "Hey, this is for you to go to college." And all those people, every year, he puts on a John Williams Scholarship Track Meet and participates, and he puts a host of foundation dinner every year at our community center, and he raises money for every, for those individuals. He chooses throughout our parish, my school system, he chooses four individuals to give a financial stipend to, to make sure, if nothing else, that he may have an opportunity, the opportunity for further education, and continues, come back to him to make our community better. Because I was always taught, you have to go out and get something to come back to bring something home. And if you never leave home, you can't go out and get something. And we've heard tonight, our community need more of our young people to leave home and bring something back, because we're hurting. And I, and what, not holding you guys any longer, it was, I, I was honored to, to make the decision, but when Councilman President Andrews called me and said, "Hey, I need you to help me do this," I, he already knew, he called my mom, said, "Whatever help he needed, I'm going to be there for him." But I, it was a no-brainer for me, because I know how it affected my life, and I've seen over the last twenty years how it affected other young people's life, and he's still doing it. And I, to do a selfless act on behalf of somebody else, I think it's a reflection on your husband, the things that he probably imparted on Coach Dykes, and I think it's a thing that, as you continue to see, that your husband is leaving a legacy, parting with the community. So, without further ado, my nomination for this year award for being a pillar of this community and, and serving this community on this day, is Mr. Donald Dykes. For your individual achievements between making a positive difference in the Hammond community through your selfless willingness to go the extra mile and improve the quality of this special African-American community, we present this award to you on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
At this time, I'd like to, uh, have the committee to come up again, to really serve on the committee to help.
It was the committee, all I did was sit back. I appreciate you guys' hard work, you put in, to help make the Rupert Dandrea, Rupert Dandrea Award of Excellence this year a success. Thank you again, introduce yourselves.
Hello everyone, my name is Chelsea Fives. I'm the program and outreach coordinator for Tangierbo Parish Library. Hello, everyone. My name is Chelsea Fives. I'm the program and outreach coordinator for Tangent Mahone Parish Library.
Marquita Jackson.
Kevin Thomas.
I'm affiliated with the MLK Partner Association, which was founded by Mr. Dangefield.
Well, I hope everybody enjoyed the program on tonight, and it was a good program, and went off with success. I thank all the people that were honored on tonight, who were well-deserved. Well-deserved of the deposits, the things that they have made in this community. It's because of them, not only me, but you enjoy some of the things that you have in the community as well. I am so thankful to be able to stand before you on tonight. I represent District One, the district where Mr. Dangefield got his start from. Just like so many Indians can go back and talk about a lot of them members, I can go back to a lot of members of mine as well, because I grew up in church with Mr. Dangefield, served a lot of Deacon. He served as chairman of the Deacon Board there for many years. So, I have a long-lasting memories and a relationship with them. It's because of Mr. Dangefield that I'm standing here really today, because I've always had a desire to help others, to help others. I don't see color, I see people. And I move off what I believe in. And being able to watch him as a youngster growing up, all the way up until he left this earth, he was a man that stood on his word, and he believed in what he said. It's because of him that I'm able to stand right here today. Because I watched that, growing up, coming out of a home of myself, watching my grandfather, who got up every day as opposed to getting in the city of Hammond. I watched him, I listened to the stories that he told me about protecting and serving here in the city. Wasn't he the job when he started? And it's still got to be the job today. But I still carry all of that on the inside of me. It allowed me to be who I am today, because somebody else took the time to make a deposit, not only in me, but in our neighborhood. Are we there yet? No. Do we have a lot of work to do? Yes, we do. But in order for it to happen, we have to come together in order to make that happen. I have a teacher, she's dead and gone right now. She used to always say, "There are no certain things, there's no big eyes, and no little ears." She used to always say, "Every tub sits on its own bottom," which is true. But when I was sitting on that bottom, I had to have some other legs to hold it up. And that's what we come here and play our part. We have to hold it up. We have to bridge the gap with our community. Just like Mr. Thomas said, I grew up across the street from the school that he talked about. I get up every day, I look out for one, I see what's going on. And I am eternally grateful and thankful for the transformation that has taken place over this school. You have no idea how happy that makes me, makes me feel on the inside. Because of them, making the deposit back at the doors that figured that they have been ripped off, to show them that they still matter and count, I... That's truly what we need in our community. I'll close with this here. My grandfather used to always tell me, "If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything." And if you're going to be a man, a strong man, always stand on your word. So, when I give somebody my word, I stand on it. Because that is what makes you, and it breaks you. And always be true to yourself and what you believe in. So, taking nothing away from this tonight, take this with you. Who light have you touched along the way? Who have you helped along the way? Who have you helped pick up that was in a bad situation? The Bible says, if you've done it to the least of them, you've done it to me. And when he was talking about me, talking like man upstairs. Let's do what we can do to make Hammond the best Hammond that we can make it, the best District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five that we can make it to be. Because we still have a long way to go. And if we look at it, our time is getting short. But we still can make a lasting mark here in the city of Hammond, because we got some great people out there. Our secretary told me, Ryan, you guys, we do have food out here, and to-go box, she said, "Take a mini-box there if you want." She said she not taking them all, taking the other box that you want. Again, I thank the council for allowing me the opportunity to serve this capacity on tonight. I thank you guys for trusting me with this. Again, I thank everybody that played part in the program that took place on tonight. But first, I want to turn a part. We thank you right now, we keep you going, we give you honor, we give you praise, we give you thanks, something today. Thank you for your daughter, son, and Jesus, Father, Lord. We just thank you for who you are. We thank you for the food that was prepared for the miracle of our bodies, that you blessed your hands, that prepared to take away all sicknesses and diseases. We thank you, Father God, that you will leave this place, you never leave your presence, travel grace as our best we go. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.